They join in, they join in?
Yeah, why don't we get going just to.
Okay. That sounds good. Thanks, everybody for joining the first planning commission meeting February 1st, 2021 for the town of Sykesville. Let me read a short public comment. This meeting is taking place via zoom.us teleconference. In order to give a public comment or listen to the meeting, you can call 1301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 872-2248-1267. The password is 476628. You will not be able to enter the meeting until 15 minutes prior to the meeting start time. You can get there now. Once you enter, you will be placed on mute. It sounds great. Call to order, everybody, and welcome. I guess we'll get right into it. Approval of the minutes from our last meeting, November 2nd. I understand they have been edited and revised. And so we're, if everybody has reviewed the revised minutes, anybody like to make a motion or any questions?
We approve the revised minutes.
Great. Second, I'll second. All in favor who was at the last meeting, please raise your hands and hold them up. All right, Jana, are you good? Great. Thanks, everybody. Now on to our agenda. We were going to start out with the comprehensive plan update. So I'll turn that, I guess, is it Joe or Troy? Who will lead that?
Well, I'll just do again, do a very brief introduction here. Just again, I know it's been a couple of months that the planning commission has met, but obviously Troy and Vanessa and the team there at Michael Baker has been working hard and getting our draft prepared. We do have an advisory committee meeting coming up later this month on, I believe it's the 18th. Is that right, Vanessa? The 18th, 16th or 18th, one of those days. But again, we wanted to give the planning commission a little bit of a update on kind of where we stand now, because likely at our March 1st meeting is when you will be seeing the document for the first time and starting your review of it. So again, we wanted to kind of get everybody up to speed. I know it's been a little bit of a break here over the holidays, but kind of prime the pump a little bit and get you all ready to dive into the review of the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Troy.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'll just start off with the presentation and Vanessa, please chime in here whenever you feel necessary. So Carrie, I guess I can share my screen now. Yep. Okay. Just one sec while I load this up. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
All right. So just jump right into it. So Vanessa and I wanted to give you folks an overview of the comprehensive plan. I think some of this hopefully was, is a little familiar from what our last update last year, I can't remember, it was in the fall or maybe it was in the summer. Boy, the time is flying here. But anyways, our approach for the project, which we started in earnest around May or June of last year focuses on a community, an issue-driven comprehensive plan, focusing on what we call an implementable comprehensive plan. And what makes it implementable is narrowing it down to the top three to five issues that have been identified through a public process that includes involvement with several of your colleagues from the planning commission on an advisory committee, also input from the general public, the citizens, residents of Sykesville, and also stakeholders, business owners, others that have quote unquote, a stake in the future of Sykesville's continued success as a great small town. Implementable, again, we establish and prioritize strategies around those three to five issues, those top issues, and those strategies are supported with clear actions and concise steps to advance the implementation going forward over the next 10 years. We're preparing the comprehensive plan in compliance with your state enabling legislation under the Maryland Land Use Code, subsection 3-102 and its parts that we're adhering to. The process, starting there in the top left-hand corner with summer 2020, again, we started this process around, you're probably more in earnest in June timeframe, but we began with data collection at the, towards the end of summer, focused on stakeholder focus groups. And then through that period and all through the comprehensive planning process, we've been meeting almost monthly with the advisory committee and several of your colleagues on your planning commission or representatives of that, on that committee. In the fall, we really started to then, once we got sort of our arms around some of the basic issues, those interviews included interviews with elected officials, town council members and mayor, and again, business owners and other interests throughout the community, et cetera. Then we started to really engage the public with some meaningful inputs through surveys, online sessions. I know we held a meeting with the planning commission. We held two events on live through Facebook Live, and I think those are detailed later on, and then other public engagement events, which we'll get into the details. And then winter, we really started to write the plan, putting pen to paper. Once we've identified and felt very good about the issues that we've identified for the plan, and then with those issues framed a series of goal statements, which we'll go over with you tonight, those goal statements then really become kind of the focal points of the plan that are then supported by more detailed strategies and action steps. And then moving forward, as Joe said, our goal here, spring 2021, but here, starting is early March, hopefully then after this month, we move the plan beyond the advisory committee, and we bring it to the planning commission for your review. And that really begins kind of that true public kind of adoption process. And then our real goal is towards the end of spring is to have it on the town council's agenda for adoption. So the promotion, a multiple multitude of efforts that we did to engage the public and other stakeholders, have the, the website or the webpage for the comprehensive plan. Jana and Joe, thank you very much for helping maintain that. That was great. We provided information to be posted on that webpage. We also had promotional postcards that were mailed to all property owners and an additional 3,000 distributed through local businesses. The promotional postcards and online survey flyers were also distributed at the Sykesville Farmers Market back in October on two events occasions, the 4th and 25th. And then, of course, we worked with the advisory committee, really helping to champion the planning process. We've done direct email distributions, promotional slide at the Sykesville cinema event on August 3rd. Again, thanks to Jana for her help with that. Also, we posted articles on the project published in the town's summer and winter newsletters. And then we use traditional approaches, town press releases, news articles, and using social media to continuously provide updates and promotion of the process. So I think we've really done a good job of making folks in the community every opportunity to participate in the process. So in terms of the kind of the impact of the results of all those efforts, I think we really achieved some really good input opportunities. And by the numbers here, stakeholder input, we had six to seven meetings with the advisory committee beginning last June. We held five individual focus groups back in end of August. We had multiple telephone interviews as follow-ups to those focus groups with particular interests, including Warfield entities and others. We had an online survey. Our goal for that survey was to receive at least 400 at a minimum responses, and we achieved, we exceeded that goal with 416 participants in the survey. We had two Facebook Live events, which I previously mentioned, those were held on October 14th and 21st. And we had an urban design workshop and presentation on October 28th and 29th. Those were very successful. I think the length of time that we needed to devote to those workshops, we had a number of participants that really were truly engaged in the process and really provided great feedback. We'll show you some of the results of that through some concept illustrations. And then in December, we had a virtual open house through, through COVID, we couldn't be there in person. So we did an online virtual open house, which again, was very successful to give the public an opportunity to see kind of the inside of what's going on and kind of a preview of the coming draft plan here this spring. Public events in fall, a little bit more specifics, October 14th was an event titled Learn About the Sykesville Comprehensive Plan. There were 230 views, 489 entities reached during that process, again, using just exactly what we're using here, Facebook Live, as a way to communicate that out to the public. October 21st was a town hall listening session, more about the comprehensive plan, 150 views, 300 in total reached. And then the design workshop, we also had an update on that after the actual workshop sessions. We had 328 views and 513 reached. So I think those numbers really speak volumes in terms of the number of individuals that expressed interest and showed interest through their online viewing and participation. And then December, again, we had the virtual open house. Again, this was available anytime to the public through the virtual meeting room that was posted on the comprehensive plan webpage. We provided information about the community in terms of a community profile, demographics, other types of information, data. Online survey results were presented, design concepts that were created during the visioning week are the visioning workshops, if you will, those two days in October, and then guiding themes for comp plans were presented, and an overall schedule of a timeline of our process. And then the individuals that viewed that and participated in the virtual open house also had the ability to provide comments through an online comment box. So those were very helpful too, to get that feedback. So once, based on all that opportunity for input, then we moved on to really gave us a good, from June all the way through November, really, and December, gave us a really kind of a real strong foundational grounding in the issues that we wanted to focus on going forward over the next 10 years. So first of all, we needed to develop the vision statement for Sykesville and the comprehensive plan, which I forgot to mention, the top right-hand corner, you're seeing this logo, Sykesville 2030. That's kind of the branding that we've developed for the comprehensive plan to give it kind of a special meeting when people see those logos and see kind of that theme, they can know that 2030 kind of demonstrates a 10-year horizon for the, for the plan itself. So the vision statement, you can see there on the screen, the town of Sykesville offers an exceptional quality of life for all residents by enhancing our downtown as a high-quality small-town center with a strong sense of place and maintaining a business-friendly culture that supports the vibrancy of our main street, preserving and promoting our unique history and small-town character for residents and visitors alike to enjoy, connecting our residential neighborhoods, parks, and downtown through an accessible network of trails and sidewalks, protecting our, protecting our natural environment through continued commitment to conservation and stormwater management, and continuing to deliver high-quality public services. So all of those kind of bullet statements there in those blue boxes really embody a lot of the themes and ideas that we heard throughout the planning process, and I think they really are very essential and unique to Sykesville for its future plan implementation to guide that process. So every vision then needs a series of goal statements. These goal statements, if you think of a wedding cake, the vision is a top layer, then it starts to broaden out. So those, that vision statement then is supported by a series of goal statements. And these goal statements are really in line with the top priority issues that we heard. So first and foremost, growth in land use as a theme and goal, promoting a sustainable future. Sykesville will support the continued investment in and preservation of its historic main street and promote the successful mixed-use redevelopment of Warfield. Together, Main Street and Warfield will help make Sykesville a sustainable, safe, and vibrant community for its residents and visitors alike. So with that goal, we really knew that downtown Sykesville was kind of the real gem, but we didn't want to ignore what we need to focus on as a community to ensure the successful redevelopment of Warfield, however that happens and whomever may be involved in that. I think the real goal is to make sure that that development achieves some level of success, because that success is quintessential to the continued success of down, of Main Street and downtown and the whole community. So again, what we wanted to try to show is that it's not like you can't, you have one without the other, but inevitably, Warfield is an opportunity that you have been focused on. You're trying to get to how that is becoming accomplished. So we see the benefit of Warfield is actually helping further support Main Street's continued success and further development. And then the second bullet, Sykesville will continue to have a safe, have safe and well maintained residential neighborhoods for individuals and families representing all ages and incomes. And I think that's really important, because you do have high-quality, well-maintained residential neighborhoods that are very vibrant. And, you know, again, your vacancy rates are almost extremely low. I know when we took our tour back last summer with Joe and Jana, I think I could probably count on one hand the number of for-sale signs. So when houses go up for sale, they really are taken off the market very quickly, because you're a very much sought-after community to live in and raise a family. So I think that speaks volumes. So what we want to try to do with that particular part of that goal statement is to recognize that you do have a high-quality residential neighborhoods that have, you know, a place for everyone, individuals, families, all ages, incomes, et cetera, are supported by those diverse neighborhoods. And then two really important, because your downtown is so vibrant and successful, accessibility and connectivity to that destination is really important. So Sykesville will be accessible for all citizens by its proving its trail and sidewalk, sidewalk network connecting neighborhoods and parks with Main Street. So again, just seeing the importance of that, that was a common theme throughout the planning process. Additional goal statements, image and identity, building our brand. Sykesville will continue to embrace its unique history and small-town charm, prioritizing a boutique sense of place through inviting gateways, design guidelines, and wayfinding. That was really important. I think you, as a local community, understand and know the importance of Sykesville. The downtown group has done an amazing job in the last 10 or so years of really building that identity and brand. But now it's time to think about how do you embrace that with your gateways, your entry points to Sykesville, so that people know that they have actually arrived in Sykesville, and then making sure that that brand and your identity is part of your whole overall marketing strategy going forward. Environmental stewardship, conservation in stormwater. The town will promote the conservation of the town's natural environment and will invest in stormwater management improvements to protect the South Branch, Patasko River, and its watersheds. So obviously flooding and stormwater impacts are a big concern, and that's why we really want to, this became a theme throughout the planning process too. So again, these goal statements that we've identified here really represent kind of the, the real key issues. Again, over and over, we heard a lot about these, but nevertheless, each one of these goal statements are going to be supported by a series of specific recommendations and strategies. So you'll see all that detail in the draft plan when it comes forward to you in March. So again, we talked about the urban design workshop. As you can see here, these are some series of illustrations that were developed through those workshops. I think what this represents is some really great opportunities to maximize town ownership via real estate in the downtown, a limited supply of real estate for new development, new expansion of the downtown to accommodate new retail, new business owners, new, even new housing. If you think about the upper stories being used for residential purposes is a great opportunity to think about, but also too, we're trying to maximize parking. So what these, the illustration on the right really show kind of the, kind of the, the design that embodies a main street, but carries that theme on through some additional development opportunities that also identify opportunity to maximize parking, which was talked about, but we also acknowledge that it's not an issue that has to be dealt with on a seven-day-a-week, 365-day basis. So we're really trying to value, think about the fact that, you know, vertical construction of new space accommodated with additional surface parking on your existing properties is a good way to go and good way to focus. And then right in the middle of this illustration is really how to maximize and celebrate that, that embankment there in front of town hall. That really is an opportunity to create some public green space, public venue space, really kind of celebrate the downtown that you have in Sykesville. Here's an illustration of the, the main street opportunity of doing some streetscape improvements. Again, the downtown Sykesville connection has done a great job already on facade improvements to really make the main street shine. And you've got a really strong group of business owners, owners and proprietors that are really invested in downtown. So this is, you have to think about what the town's potential investment could be to further support that collective investment by the private sector. So I think a public-private partnership type of, of approach, both on the previous slide and this slide really showcases those improvements. And again, Warfield comes into play, because some of these improvements are going to take money, going to take financing to do that, and possibly revenues gained through the development of Sykesville could be used to maybe support some financial investment opportunities in the downtown. So I know Joe and I have talked about that a little bit, and I know that's been something to think about going forward, but that really is kind of the benefit of seeing the success of Warfield helps see further success of your downtown. And then this is on the southern end of, of Main Street by the train station, thinking about some opportunity there on the left to have some of those streetscapes in between the buildings more, become more enlivened. And also too, that could be done through some greenery, special pavement treatments, but also lighting. So in the nighttime, you actually have venues that continue back off the On Street and really provide kind of that safe space, and really trying to attract people to explore downtown Sykesville, not just in the daytime, but in the evening time, when daylight hours are a little bit longer, you really want to make sure that the vendors are staying open later to extend those business hours and also to extend the opportunity for shopping, dining, and other opportunities. So again, that streetscape view with the lighting between the buildings is illustrated here by this kind of cross-hatched herringbone walkway. You can see some improvement opportunities to some of the circulation in that area, and also to some of the improvement to parking to maximize those opportunities. Then across the river, we talked about your gateway treatments. This is over in the neighboring county, but also at the old butter, excuse me, apple butter factory. There's been a lot of talk about how to reuse that building. So what we focused our efforts on was, how can you create this accessibility and connections with downtown, but also creating a sense of place and well, just like you have a gateway for Warfield, you also have an opportunity at your gateway points like this location, coming into the southern end of town, create that gateway, your sense of arrival, sense of place. So a lot of good opportunity here that can be envisioned and embodied in this particular illustration. So to wrap up the adoption timeline, again, tonight's presentation is just a precursor to your formal presentation of the draft plan next month in March. As Joe said, February 18th is our next advisory committee meeting. We intend to be that as the last advisory committee meeting, and then we'll be turning the, kind of the reins, the planning process over to the planning commission again in March. And then March and April 2021, we'll have that 60-day public and comment period, which is required by the Maryland Land Use Code requirements. And you can see some of the requirements there in terms of, we'll give the public a 30-day review period, have comments due by the 31st. So we really need to kind of usher the process on to keep the process moving. Hopefully, May 3rd would be a time that we can have the planning commission hold a public hearing and consider its recommendation for town council to adopt the plan at a public hearing tentatively scheduled for May 10th. And that's where council would hold, again, it's optional, but we would recommend they hold a public hearing, and then they consider the plan for adoption at that point in time. Vanessa, did I miss anything?
No, not at all. That was great.
So we can turn it back to the chair, and we can, Vanessa and I can answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Good to see all the good progress as well. And for me, obviously, the tie between Warfield and downtown, because I think they're, Warfield is extremely important to our town's future as well as downtown's future and survival. Any questions or comments from any other planning commission members or town? Great. And we look forward to seeing the plan, I guess, soon.
All right. Well, that's, that's good. Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to present, and thanks very much, everybody. We'll be, we'll be seeing you here soon, of course, right, Steve?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Bye-bye.
All right. We'll move on to the next item and meeting schedule for 2021. It was sent out in the package Jana had previously sent. This is just for information purposes only. Correct?
Yeah, so we have them approved, and I'll post them on the website.
We do need to vote and approve them, or?
Yeah. And the only, the only change would be September for Labor Day. So instead of Monday, you'll be on Tuesday, the 7th.
Got it. Okay.
July 6th is also a Tuesday. Because the 5th is, Sunday's the holiday, July 4th. So the 5th would be our meeting normally.
Oh, so I do have the 6th. I just didn't start. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you. All right. It's a motion to approve. Great. I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor? Great. All members here voted in favor. Thank you. All right. The next item, county updates. None?
She had updates, but she, I don't know, I don't know where she is. So maybe she thought because, oh, you know what? The county was closed today. That's probably why she's not on.
Well, the updates were submitted, the package from the planning commission members. Any questions about those updates? No action is required on our part, is what I understand.
Yeah, just for informational purposes.
Great. That works. Well, then let's, let's move on to the towns' updates.
So I think the one item there that's listed on the agenda, again, it's more of a FYI, or really to try to get some, or at least start the planning commission thinking about this, is one of the things that I've noticed in my now almost year and a half here with the town, we haven't had a lot of developments come before the planning commission. I don't know if that's my fault or just happened to how the calendar fell. But as we've started to see things start to gear up a little bit, and people have started to ask questions about development process, you know, we have started looking, or I should say, we've started looking at, you know, how we handle these submittals internally, you know, how they get reviewed, how they get presented to the planning commission, how they then go through the county process, or at least the county review process. So one thing we've noticed is there is some redundancy, and that there probably should be almost two parallel paths that some of these developments end up having to go through. So there's a distinct plating process, and then there's a distinct site plan process. And right now, our development guidelines kind of clump it all together, and they don't really show the, I guess, the differences between those two. So one of the things that Jan and I have been working on is trying to get a better handle on how that process really should work to make it the most efficient for everybody. It's not, it's not trying to make it easier necessarily for development. It's just trying to get it to a point where, you know, when we're ready to bring it to planning commission, that it's ready for a decision, not just, you know, you guys look at it, and then it starts a review process, and then it comes back to you on a later date. So that's something we're looking at. And, you know, once we, once we figure out exactly what those steps need to be, we'll probably bring something back to make sure you guys are aware exactly what those steps have to be. Again.
Thank you.
That, that plating process and the site plan process are two very different things. They don't need to follow, they don't, you guys don't need to see them three and four times along the way.
I appreciate that. That review and look in direction. We look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
And then just a couple other updates of some, some ongoing things. I think we had mentioned at a previous meeting that the Schoolhouse Road annexation was, was going to eventually come before the planning commission. I can tell you that we have received the petition for annexation. the petition for annexation. It needs to be introduced at council before it can start the regular review process. But again, we have received that. So y'all will be seeing that shortly. Most likely, it won't be the March meeting. It'll probably be more like April, just to make sure it goes through the county review before you guys see it. But has, has been received and it'll be on your schedule soon. And then from a development standpoint, we have received several inquiries about the done-right buildings. There is some redevelopment proposal that's, that's being kicked around for there. So we expect actually probably more like a BZA submission before it comes to planning commission. So again, we might be another month or so behind on that one, but somebody to keep on your radar.
Do we know what type of use?
Right now, they're, they're showing a mixed use. So again, there's two buildings there. They want to use some of it as residential, which is allowed, but you're, but right now you have to keep it, I think 50% of the first floor has to be maintained as commercial. So I think that's one thing they may be asking the BZA to consider. But again, right now, we haven't actually received any of that. But any redevelopment of those two buildings would be, would be good to see as long as they, they maintain some of the commercial integrity of those buildings. And then the only other one that we've, we've received, at least some communication on is on Conaway. If you don't know where Conaway is, don't, that's not really surprising. It's right off of Main Street, just north of where the townhouse is. It's kind of a small little road that, you know, kind of snakes up there into the, on the hillside. There's a potential for a subdivision back there, a very small subdivision that the owner would like to put a couple of duplexes or attached single-family, depending on how you refer to that. But again, we have not received that submittal yet, only some communication with the property owner back and forth. So if we do get that, then obviously we can make the planning commission.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if it, you mentioned that there's, you might have an issue for the BZA for a waiver with the requirement of 50% of the main floor being commercial. Would that type, would you all procedurally, would you pass that first through the planning commission here for consideration before you bring that to the BZA? Because I think we'd have to have the input from, you know, the majority of the folks in the town who, who are overseeing things like that in terms of the development and the planning and what type of occupants go where in the town? Is that, is that a reasonable request on my part or?
Typically, and again, you know, each case is its own kind of unique circumstance. But because there's specific code in the zoning ordinance that says it must be 50%, the planning commission really couldn't weigh in on that, other than making it exactly what, what the code requires it. So if they want to deviate anything from that, they really have to come to the BZA first and ask for that deviation before the planning commission can really approve or consider anything.
Okay. I'd want to hear the thinking behind the firmness of the, of the code to begin with, I think, before we could make a, an informed decision on that. All right. I didn't want to dwell on that, but that perked up my ear because I was just wondering what the, the order of process would be to review something like that. But that's okay. All right. Thanks.
So that's really all I had for town updates unless anybody had any questions.
No, no questions here. Commission, any questions? Great. Well, good to see everybody. I'll be on, on a screen, but still good to see everybody. And thanks for participation. And with that, I'll leave us on a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. We're all good. Have a great one and hopefully we'll see you next month.
Take care.
Thank you. Take care.